Chat feature. I'm gonna guess most people are familiar with these video conferencing. Applications at this point, but just in case you're not. Down if you hover your cursor or on your phone, you may have to press a little like menu button. And you'll access a chat looks like a little. You know, thought bubble or so forth. And you can then submit questions along the way. So what we're going to do, we believe the presentation should take probably about an hour, maybe less than an hour. And then we'll break the questions. And we'll answer every question we possibly can, as long as people want to hang around and stay with us. We did receive a good number of questions submitted via the. Google form in advance, appreciate people doing that. And throughout the presentation, we'll cover most of those and if and then we have at the end of the presentation, we'll cover. We'll cover any other remaining questions or questions that get submitted tonight. We're going to start the presentation just by giving you a little bit of background and understanding about how our plan came to be. We're then focus in on. The paramount issue of keeping everybody safe and healthy and steps we're taking to make sure that we're doing everything within our means to. To do just that. Then we'll talk a bit about the instructional and academic planning and scheduling and so forth. And what what you can expect, you know, for students. Whether they're with us or at home during this blended remote learning period. And then we'll talk a little about the parent survey that we asked everybody to complete as well. And then, like I said, wrap up with questions. So once again, if you could, please keep yourself on mute. Any questions along the way? Submit them through the chat. Okay? My name is Mike Reardon. I am the superintendent at Oaklawn Community High School. I really do thank you for giving up some of your. Summer evening on a beautiful July. Evening here. And our objective with this with this town hall is to. Provide a little bit of elaboration and explanation on the 20 plus page plan. That was released last week on Friday. And of course, address any questions you may have. So um. You know where this story starts, I suppose really goes back to the spring when we were in all schools were given the directive. To to start transitioning to a remote learning environment. And of course, that turned out to be for the entire school year. And so as we kind of went our way through the summer, watching what was happening with the pandemic. Kind of waiting for updated guidance from Springfield. That actually finally came on, it was a Tuesday, July or June 23rd. So on June 23rd, the governor and the state superintendent. And some other individuals from the Department of Public Health held their press conference and then released a 63 page document. That strongly encouraged schools to find a way to open up for at least some in in person instruction for students. But the caveat to that was that it had to be done in a manner. That met all sorts of safety stipulations to ensure. To the greatest degree possible, safety of students and staff and their families. Marcus, can you do a mute all, please?
Yeah, Mike, there are people who are having trouble with the chat.
Oh.
So if you're on a multiple device, it sounds like they're not able to. Put into the chat.
Uh oh, okay.
So if we could, and it looks like I don't have that set anymore. I think it's on your end.
And I am really unsure how to solve that issue. You know, maybe what we could ask people to do is. If they have on their phone could submit an email to the fall 2020 at olchs.org. That's another avenue we're providing for for families to submit questions or concerns. And Dr. Lees is on the line, has access to those emails, so we can maybe monitor things that come in. Through that process as well. I'm trying to address those questions.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay. Okay, but um. Yeah, we're getting some. We were getting some background noise there, so just looking for. A mute all to solve that issue. So as I was saying. The 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 journey to where we are now, at least over the past, you know, month has been started on that on that release of the guidance document from. The State Board of Education and jointly with the Department of Public Health. And as I said, the emphasis was. The need to return kids back to school. We all, I think, know full well that. The learning that goes on in person when kids are in school with, you know, with each other and with their students. Is of a higher level than can be done when we're completely remote. And so with that. Directive or, you know, strong encouragement, I guess. We put together a task force that included. Multiple staff members and parents and students. To review these guidelines and come up with a a pathway for us to open the school. In a safe and healthy manner. And so with almost 100 people and working on three different teams. We laid the groundwork for the plan that was released last Friday. And so we had a we had a virtual town hall meeting with our staff earlier today. We have the the virtual town meeting. Town hall meeting with our families tonight. And also in that communication from last Friday, besides releasing the plan, releasing information about this event. We asked all parents to provide us with some feedback with an online very brief survey. And again, we'll talk about that a little bit. I guess before we get into the details or, you know, aspects of the plan, I just want to kind of right up front. Address the question that many have asked and, you know, why? You know, should we really be opening the school? I'm sure if you're paying attention to the news, you're hearing that there are. Many schools out there that are doing plans very similar to ours, but there are also many school districts out there. That are decided that they're going to start the year and for some period of time at least. Fully remote without any kids coming back to the building. That's not our approach. Okay, I will say that that doesn't mean something may not change that if conditions in the community or in our region. Were to change and we did not feel we could bring people safely back into the building. We would need to pivot to a full remote scenario where where kids are not coming to school. But our feeling at this point is that we should pursue that. And I guess another way to word that. Question is. You know, are the benefits to students to have that in person instruction, that in person learning opportunity in the in the school building? There are benefits obviously there. Are those benefits worth the risk that? Are there as well for students and staff? To possibly contract the virus? And and I think everyone knows full well that, you know, anytime you walk out of your house and go anywhere, there is a possibility. Of of contracting the virus and certainly that would be true with, you know, hundreds of. Students and staff walking into and out of our school every day. But. The direction we're getting from the Illinois Department of Public Health, those doctors and those scientists at that organization. Are saying in no unclear terms that if you follow the guidelines, the safety mitigation strategies. The sanitation strategies and so forth. That the the risk is greatly, greatly minimized. Minimized to the point that that question of is it worth it? Is the benefit to kids in learning worth the risk? Our feeling at this point at least is the answer is yes. We are going to do everything within our means to. Follow those guidelines and actually go above and beyond some of those guidelines in terms of making sure that. Our building and our campus are safe for everyone that comes, you know, onto our onto our campus. And so I guess the other thing I want to mention here is a, you know, you see CDC and IDPH and State Board and Oaklawn High School. Obviously, there's connections among all these organizations, but. You know, as a state, you know, as a public school district, we are a branch of the state government. And our direct line of authority is with the State Board of Education and the State Department of Public Health. I'm not saying the CDC doesn't influence anything that we look at or what we do, but really we look first to the Department of Public Health. And it's those doctors and scientists at that organization that is our primary resource and 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 who is. In terms of the guidance that we are most closely following. We certainly, you know, are paying attention to what the CDC says, but. The Department of Public Health is our primary authority for us. And so I guess the last thing I just want to say, you know, going into this before we get into the plan is just acknowledge a few, a few things right up front. You know, we all acknowledge that there is some risk in opening the school. And as I said, our feeling is that with all of the safety features and practices we have in store for the start of the year. We feel that that's an acceptable risk. Okay, at this point in time. Those doctors, those scientists at the Department of Public Health and the CDC are telling us that if we abide by those guidelines. We should greatly minimize those risks. And we are absolutely 100% committed to enforcing these expectations and guidelines. And and fulfilling everything that that we are expected to do and everything we're going to tell you that we're doing, they are going to happen. And the last thing I just want to say is that, you know, this plan, it's it's not. It's not static, meaning we are going to have to constantly renew, review and and renew and revise as your guidance comes out. And it does come out often revisions and added and additions and so forth. So. What was distributed to families last week on Friday may very well. Be updated or changed even between now and the start of school year if 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 conditions change or guidance changes. And as I already said, there is absolutely the possibility, in fact, maybe people feel it's a probability that at some point in time. We are going to have to transition back to a a full remote learning scenario and we will be ready to make that pivot. And that will be much different than it was last spring if we have to do that. All right, so I'm I'm going to advance to. I went too far. There we go. I I'm not going to cover every bullet point on this slide. I'm going to cover what I feel is the most key factors and important factors in terms of. Ensuring that we have health and safety for all and that it is absolutely paramount. Above all else that we are keeping our students and staff and their families safe. So there's mitigation strategies which are kind of behavioral changes that we're going to be. Expecting of everybody coming to the building and then there's sanitation and disinfectant strategies to help spread any sort of transmission of, you know, of the virus. I'm going to focus more on the mitigation strategies. I think the enhanced sanitation and disinfecting strategies are pretty self explanatory. We are obligated to conduct symptom and temperature checks for everybody that comes into the building. And so we have acquired a large supply of those thermal scan, temperature thermometers. And we will have staff stationed at specific doorways around the perimeter of the school. Students will have to come in and get their temperature scanned and quickly address those questions that you probably have had to deal with already. When you go into different, different stores and shops and other places. Regarding symptoms. And so we will do that for students and our staff has to do the same thing. So that will be one thing that that will be very different for our students when they walk into the school year, this coming school year. I will tell you that if there are students that are symptomatic, they will not be allowed to enter the school building. And help me out, Marcus there. Thank you. Students that come to school with any sort of symptoms. Will be isolated and we will have to contact parents and students will be sent back home. So. I'm going to say this now and you'll hear me and others say it many, many times between now and the start of the school year is that. Kids that have symptoms need to stay home. We need kids to stay home if they have symptoms. We don't want to be in a situation. We don't want to be in a situation where. You know, we're we're, you know, kind of stopping kids at the door and then having to send them home, at least as frequently as possible. The other non negotiable directive in our plan. That came from the State Board of Ed and the Department of Public Health is that everyone will need to wear a mask at all times in the building. There are a few exceptions to that. There, you know, of course, if they're if they're eating or drinking out of a water bottle, you know, people are pull their mask down for that. If you're in a music class and playing the flute or something, you know, that that's an acceptable situation. But outside of that, inside the building, there really is no opportunity. And there really is no such thing or to be compliant of a of a mass break. The the one exception to that may also though be. Outside when 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 kids are outside, which most of our PE classes during the decent weather will will take the kids outside. That is an opportunity where kids will be able to take their mask off, provided that everyone maintains that that social distancing of of six feet. And and then the third bullet there is just as important is the need for everyone to maintain that social distance, that that's six feet. Distance among among students and staff and so forth. So. We are not going to be assigning lockers to students. When students walk into the building, they're going to need to proceed directly to their first period class. The cafeteria will not be available. Kids are not going to be able to congregate, you know, in in common areas and hallways and so forth. And so it's it's going to be a very, very different environment. And so we also have built the schedule in a way so that kids will not eat lunch at the building. We will have lunch. Our lunch service will provide meals. Kids can pick those up for purchase or if they if a student is qualified for the free reduced lunch program. You know, that will still be in play here, but they could pick up those meals on their way out the building at the end of the day for them. And so the classroom furniture, we're pulling half of our furniture, half the desks are going to be out of the classroom and we're spreading the rest of the desk around. And we've are taking great steps to make sure that kids are sitting in desks that are six feet away from from each other. In in basically every classroom. So there's a few other items there in terms of quarantining and and and, you know, if there is a positive test. People probably know by now that if you test positive, you you basically are under a 14 day quarantine. If we do have a student or a staff member in the building that is that we are notified about testing positive. Obviously, we'll work with that student and family to secure work and help the kid, you know, keep up as well as possible while they're at home. And the the other element to that is if there is close contact. Me and by close contact, the Department of Public Health defines that as within that six foot radius for more than 15 minutes. And so by setting up the classrooms like I described. That shouldn't, that should mean that. You know, one kid in a classroom gets sick, there should not be a need for others to quarantine. Provided we have those distances in place and maintained. A student walking down the hallway and maybe kind of passing another student does not qualify as a close. You know, close contact that would require additional. Quarantining and so forth. So our nurse's office has been updated and expanded and they're ready to deal with what will come and and they would, of course, deal with any student during the day that maybe becomes symptomatic. And they would be the primary communication. Area for families that maybe are dealing with a COVID situation and so forth. So as you can see here, and again, I didn't, I know I didn't go through all of these. And I believe most of them are self explanatory and in the plan, there's more elaboration on each of these items as well. But can't overstress enough the need for us to abide by these expectations. You know, that's students, that's that's staff as well. Keep keep those distances and keep those masks on at all times.
Hey, Mike, we're going to take a quick pause here just to remind people to. If they have questions to email them to fall 2020 at ulchis.org. Just so that we can work, we are monitoring that email right now. It's fall 2020 at ulchis.org for questions.
Yeah, or is the chat available for at least some people? I mean, is that they have either option, correct?
I have not seen anyone write anything in the chat. I think for most people it's disabled.
Okay. All right. Sorry about that, everybody. But yeah, fall 2020 at olchs.org. Okay, transitioning then to, you know, what the instructional plan looks like in our reopening plan. There's there's basically two plans we're putting out there. There's the blended remote learning plan. And there is the full remote learning plan. The expectation from the State Board of Ed is that no matter what plan you're utilizing. Students are engaged in at least 300 minutes of learning activity on each given day. And so either plan, which either way we we follow here. You know, that that is our intention and and good faith effort made to provide 300 minutes per day. So in the blended remote learning scenario, students are coming onto campus two times a week. They are going to be assigned to one of two attendance groups, which we're calling a green group and a gray group. That's going to be basically an alpha split, A through K will be in the green group, L through Z will be in the gray group. However, a caveat to that, we may need to modify that a little bit just to keep things balanced at the classroom level. Because we want a scenario in which we have basically half the kids coming to school, but we have to ensure that each specific classroom. Has only about half the kids in that class. And so if we have something that just through. You know, just the random assignment of kids to classes where we have too many kids on the green group. We may have to kind of sort that out. And so there, like I said, there may be exceptions. The other exception with this is a parent request. In that survey that we put out to the parents. We offer the opportunity for parents to let us know that because of a schedule. At home or or maybe it's a childcare issue. If you wanted to move your son or daughter from green to gray or gray to gray, we would honor that request and that may actually help us with some balancing. So kids will come two days a week. They are coming to class. The green group is basically coming on Tuesdays and Thursdays and the gray group is coming on Wednesdays and Fridays. So on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, that is when the students will be focusing on their morning classes. Kids basically have six classes. Unless they have zero hour, I'll touch on zero hour in a little bit. But they have six classes, three in the morning and three in the afternoon. So on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, it's going to be all about their three morning classes. And then on Thursdays and Fridays, we'll follow a very similar schedule, but the focus would be on their three afternoon classes. And so what would happen on a Tuesday? And then a Wednesday would be that there would be in person for half the kids. They would go to their three morning classes or 75 minutes per class. Then they would leave at 12:28, I believe it is. We'll see on the next screen a little more specifics. They could pick up their lunch if they want on their way out the door, but they will have some additional. Learning activity once they get home. Okay, to round out to get to that 300 minutes of instruction. The kids who are at home all day. Are going to have 75 minutes of at home independent, you know, learning activities in basically in the morning for those three morning classes on Tuesday and Wednesday. But then there's going to be 25 minute. Virtual at home, virtual sessions with their morning teachers for 25 minutes each. And so that's what Tuesday and Wednesday would look like. With half the kids in the building and then going home for independent work. The other half in the morning are working on independent work, but then in the afternoon are connecting remotely with their morning teachers, with their morning class teachers. And then on Thursday and Friday, the basically the system repeats itself, but it's with the three afternoon classes instead of the three morning classes. Monday is going to be a day where most all students will remain at home. There may be some exceptions for students that have some special needs or other accommodations or related services where there may be some kids coming into the building targeted. You know, for targeted services, but for the most part, kids are going to remain at home on Monday. And they will go through their entire schedule, all six of their classes through a at home virtual. Connection with with their teachers for again, 25 minutes each. And then there would be some additional independent work again to to round out to the 300 minutes. The other thing that we incorporated, knowing that this is going to be. Knowing that this is going to be. Stay on mute. I appreciate it. Thank you. We know that this is going to be an incredible transition for both our students and our staff. And our teachers are going to completely need to restructure the way that they carry out their curriculum. Set up those in their instructional lessons and their assessment strategies and so forth. So. We're building significant time in the in the in the day for student or for teachers. To be able to do that kind of planning and preparation and provide the support that they need. So. That was another key component of our plan. So that kind of in a quick nutshell explains what the blended remote learning day will look like. But we also are providing the option for families based on their individual needs and situations. To opt out of that blended remote learning plan and. Allow students to stay at home and receive instruction through a full remote learning. And the the expectation of that 300 minutes is still in place. And so if a family, parents decide that they want their students to stay home. You need to respond to that parent survey and that question is asked and that's how you can indicate to us. What your preference is on this issue. But I will say that if you elect to move to a full remote learning. There is almost for sure need going to need to be some schedule changing for kids' schedules in that scenario. There are some classes that are very difficult to teach in a full remote environment. Primarily, we're talking about like hands on laboratory type of project based classes. And so we don't have a predetermination that, you know, this class cannot run, but. We need to kind of see what. How many students and what those students needs are that have selected the full remote learning. And then we'll devise a plan about how to provide educational services for those students as well. One possibility for us is that we would kind of take all the kids who are in the full remote plan and we would build kind of. Subject sections for those kids, an English section, a math section and so forth for those kids. And then assign them to specific teachers at Oaklawn. And we are going to be staffing all this with Oaklawn teachers. I did see some comments out there that we might not be using our own staff for that. That's that's not accurate. Even the kids on full remote are going to be connected with Oaklawn Community High School teachers. But the other option for us to consider is our Ingenuity Online Academic Program. That doesn't mean that you're not dealing with the teacher, but it's primarily a computer driven, computer based curriculum. That with supports from from teachers at Oaklawn. But this is a one more opportunity here that under full remote learning, as we said all along. There is certainly the opportunity, the possibility and some people's minds probability. That we may be transitioning to a full remote learning for everyone at some point in time. And if we do that, I can tell you and I can assure you that it is going to be better than it was last last spring. Two key components that will not be that will not be in place as like they were last spring is number one. Everything the kids are going to be doing, they're going to be accountable for. They will be graded, they will provide a feedback and so forth. Unlike the spring where the direction from Springfield was no student grade could go down at all, you know, that's that's not the case. So. Obviously, that provides both that intrinsic and extrinsic motivation for kids to to stay engaged and and do their work. And we also know that we have to, we have to maintain that personal connection between our students and our teachers. And so there would definitely need to be some ramped up remote virtual learning where kids are connecting directly on a regular basis, you know, with our staff. Okay, so. This this graphic was in the plan. If you had a chance to look at it, it basically just is another way of presenting what I what I just described on the last. On the last slide. So if if you're if you're a student assigned to the green group, this is basically what your week looks like. Okay? Monday, you're at home. You're going to go through all of your classes, period one through period 10. 25 minute session. There's a lunch break after the fourth class to give just everybody a little time to stretch and eat lunch and then come back and round out the day. And then, like I said, there'd be Spartan Plus time for individual contacts with teachers, kind of office hours that the teachers would keep in the afternoon on Monday. And and so forth. And then you could see on Tuesday, as I mentioned, the green group would be in the building in the morning for their three classes, 75 minutes each dismissed at 12:28. Picking up lunch on the way and then at home, they would have. Follow up work of about 25 minutes for each of those three morning classes. Wednesday, they are home all day. They are working on assignments with their, you know, from their, from those morning classes in the morning. And then there is a connection. And then there is a connection virtually at-home connection with the teachers in the afternoon. And then Thursday, Friday basically replicates that, but of course, it's the afternoon classes now instead of the morning classes. I had mentioned zero hour in the past. We had deliberated about whether it was going to be feasible to continue the zero hour program and decided that it was too important to 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 possibly take that away. And so we are continuing with the zero hour program. And it will operate again like like the other classes where kids are going to be broken down into green and gray groups. And they will come on two days a week and attend their zero hour from seven until seven forty-five. So the green kids will attend their zero hour classes again on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then I'll transition over to the gray group. They will attend on Wednesdays and Fridays. And then all the kids would connect with their zero hour teachers for twenty-five minutes remotely on Mondays as well. So this gray group is really just a mirror image of of the the green group schedule that we just looked at. It just kind of flip flops Tuesdays and Wednesdays and flip flops Thursdays and Fridays. Okay, at this point, you're probably tired of hearing my voice. And so I'm going to turn it over to our principal, Dr. Gina Leeds. And she's going to go over in a little more detail about what to expect those first, you know, couple weeks of school.
Hi, good evening, everybody. So yeah, Mike has kind of, Dr. Riden has kind of outlaid for everybody the, you know, the breakdown of what the blended schedule is going to look like, but here's a little look at what our calendar is. So these are just like the first two weeks of school that we have kind of outlined here because they're going to be a little bit different. So Monday, August seventeenth is the first day that's on this calendar. In the past, when we have been advertising the calendar, we've been advertising that Wednesday, August nineteenth was going to be our first day of school for students. And so we have pushed that back just by one day to allow our staff an extra planning day. The state has given us some remote learning planning days that count as soon as attendance days. If you remember, we did some of these in the spring as well, where it's it's basically a teacher in-service day. So our teachers will have an institute day, the seventeenth, eighteenth, and then the nineteenth. On the twentieth and the twenty-first, we are having orientation days. So let's talk about our returning students first. That's that's the easier group to kind of understand what's happening. Our returning students, sophomores, juniors, and seniors will do virtual work on those days. So we're calling these orientation days because there's there's a bunch of things that we need to get our kids ready and prepared for. Like the school they left in February is not the school that they're returning to here on August twenty-fifth. So what's we need to give them some information about protocols. We need to talk about masks and how to wear masks. We need to give them all the information we're giving you tonight about like where should they enter the building and how are they going to enter those kinds of things and those procedural things. Along with that is that we instituted a new learning management system this summer. So I know for those of you maybe who in the past have looked at where your assignments are, some are have been in iTunes U, some have been in Google Drive and Showbie and all these different places. So in order to streamline everything and make it accessible to parents and students, we've moved to a learning management system called Canvas. So our returning students on Thursday and Friday will work in Canvas. We will send home, we're going to mail home instructions to everybody on how to get students to get into that Canvas app from their iPad. Everything will be set up for them. There won't be any codes or anything that they need to get in. So they'll have some virtual work. There is a Canvas course that introduces them to Canvas that all students will have to complete. There's also another Canvas course that's going to focus on some social emotional learning things. Asking kids to set a plan, reflect on how things went in the spring and try to combat some of those issues maybe they had and given them some resources to tackle some of these things that they're going to need moving forward. So all students, whether they're in e-learning, whether they're going to be blended in the building with us, will need to complete those courses. Along with that, the teachers, the administration is going to put out that, you know, introductory video. And then we're going to have the teachers do the things that they would normally do on the first day, except for that it's going to be done virtually. So they'll be sending their syllabus. They can send that electronically through Canvas. There's a lot of like get-to-know-you type activities that teachers do on the first day. There's always the, you know, reading the attendance roster and pronouncing names correctly. That can all be done virtually. So that's what our returning students then will do on those virtual days. Our freshmen and our new students, obviously they're brand new to us and we want them to feel connected to Oaklawn like all of the rest of our students. So we're going to bring those students on campus. Our freshmen and new students will be coming both of those days, August twentieth and twenty-first. So Thursday and Friday, they're being coming to the building, eight thirty AM to eleven AM. They'll go through all the symptom checking that that Dr. Riden has talked about previously. And what will happen is though on one day, depending if they're green or gray, they'll go through their schedule, which means walking through all of their scheduled classes so they can meet their teacher, find their way around the hall room or in the hallways with the with them being the only ones in the building. They will obviously follow this green and gray schedule, so there'll only be half of the kids there following their schedule. The other half of the students will be going through some orientation that we have. Getting them used to their iPads, talking about digital citizenship, meeting their counselors and their deans. So we'll set that up so that one day they go through their schedule, the other day they're sitting through some orientation. So they'll come onto the building, we'll have some giveaways for them, just making them feel welcome. This is something we've traditionally done, like in our second in-service day, so that the freshmen can come before everybody else. So we wanted to make sure that they still were able to experience that in this blended setting. So that'll happen on Thursday and Friday. Then we have the weekend off, we come back and then we begin that blended schedule that you've seen in the previous slides and that are that's in our plan where Monday is virtual learning day. Kids are expected to log into the on the designated time to their periods with their teachers for virtual meetings. And then starting that Tuesday, we go through the schedule of switching off green groups and gray groups on campus. So that's just a quick overview of those first two weeks. As I said, we will be sending home actual physical mail that does have this information and also the information for Canvas, because there is a parent login to Canvas that you can look in and see your students work and and keep tabs of them that way as well.
Here we go. Thank you, Dr. Leeds. Okay, we're kind of near the end of the presentation and then we'll get to the Q and A. But before we wrap things up, I wanted to re-mention the parent survey that we had sent out on Friday. It's a it probably will take you about ten minutes or less to complete. But it's going to provide us with really important information that we need to have in our hands. While we have this two-week window to prepare for the start of 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 school. So we're really asking all families to reply to the survey by this coming Sunday evening, August, August second. And I put in the bullet point list here the kind of questions we're asking. This is where parents will inform us if they want their 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 son or daughter to be into, you know, stay within the remote, the blended remote plan. That is the default. If we don't hear anything from a parent on a survey or otherwise, the default assignment is the blended remote model. But if you want your son or daughter to move into the full remote model, this is the method to let us know of that. This is where I mentioned, if you want to move attendance grouping from green or gray, we can do that if there are special circumstances for that where where your son or daughter really does need a hallway locker, we would accommodate that with a with a parent request. We want to know which door the kids enter and what their typical mode of transportation is so we can be staffed appropriately and and organizationally ready, you know, to to get kids into the door quickly and and safely. We would like some information about if you plan on acquiring a lunch before you leave or not. And we can work with our our food service, Country House Restaurant, our food service group to make sure we're prepared for that as well. We have resources available to help families if they have internet connectivity issues or other technology issues. We just have to know about it and and we were are able and willing to provide some supports for kids and families that have needs there. And kind of more back is Dr. Leeds mentioned, a social emotional component and looking out for not just the academic well-being of our students and families, but those social emotional needs that our kids need after going through what everyone has gone through over these past months. You know, we play a role, I mean, we we as a school play a role in in helping our kids grow socially, emotionally as well in addition to those academic needs that we that we meet. And so we asked a few questions about issues that maybe we could be of assistance with. And and we surely would appreciate your your feedback on that. And and then how would you prefer to to be contacted by us? So if you haven't already submitted that survey, please do with your earliest convenience. We are going to resend out the direct link to that survey later later tonight when we're done with this presentation. So hopefully it arrives right at the top of your inbox. You can click directly on that link and and get that information submitted to us. At last check about an hour ago, we were only at about twenty to twenty-five percent of the parents had had responded so far. So we we have a long way to go to get the the information we're looking for. So I appreciate your help with that. Which now brings us to the Q and A session. And this green lists these thirteen questions that were submitted by, oh, I don't know, about twenty twenty-five, thirty people had submitted some questions. Oftentimes there was overlap here. But these are the essential questions that were submitted to us, you know, in advance of the presentation. So many of these are have quick and and simple answers and and some need a little more work on our part in terms of planning before we can probably answer them in great detail, but we're going to do the best we can with all of these. And some of these questions have given us some thoughts about things we need to make sure we're we're tackling over the next couple of weeks. And so we'll get through these and then then we'll turn to then we'll turn to the the emails that have submitted if there are additional questions that we haven't already covered. So question number one is what what is going on with athletics and extracurricular programs? Let me start with athletics. The answer is we don't know. There have been discussions going on at the state level involving the Department of Public Health and the IHSA about whether or not the different athletic programs can operate in a safe manner. And so there's been some kind of wrangling going on at the state level with that, and we're all kind of waiting to see what what if guidelines are going to be altered to possibly allow extracurriculars. Because like what I can tell you right now is that the guidelines and the directives to schools from the Department of Public Health would not allow us to have most of our athletic programs operate. And so the question is, is the Department of Public Health going to revise those expectations and guidelines a little bit that maybe would allow some athletic programs to operate or not? So we're expecting answers to those questions in a matter of, you know, days. But as of right now, we we just don't know. When it comes to other extracurricular programs, more of our like clubs and interest base, our feeling is that those could happen. Even in a blended remote, or even if we move to a full remote, a lot of those kind of activities can happen without having to meet in person. Again, ideally, that's not the best case, but it is something, you know, first, for example, student council, student council can do a heck of a lot of good things, even if they aren't able to connect in person or at least at all times in person. So we do plan on supporting it to the greatest degree we can, those those extracurriculars. There was a question about, you know, when can we get to school opening full-time every day? There are some parents out there that really wish, and I understand this, we all do want this, but really wish that we had our kids coming to school every single day. We just can't not do that in a safe manner. By following the guidelines of the doctors and scientists at Department of Public Health, you know, we we have to live within those boundaries and there is just no physical way that we could have all of our kids in the building at all times, you know, like we normally would until conditions change and allow that. Zero hour kids, we talked a little about, they are going to have an issue where their zero hour period ends and there's about a forty or forty-five minute period of time or so before first period starts. So we have in the past allowed those kids freedom to kind of go where they wanted. Some kids actually went and got some breakfast and came back. We would continue to allow that. But we are going to have to manage that in a little different way because one of the safety protocols is we can't have more than fifty individuals in one space. So the cafeteria could hold some of those kids, but not all of them. We got about three hundred or so kids in zero hour, maybe four hundred. So we're going to have to utilize some other spaces for those kids to be able to assemble in a safe way socially at distance. Hands-on classes, such as wood been implemented, I did touch on this already. And with the blended learning, that is what is going to be the in-person learning all about. And so we expect our teachers to utilize those seventy-five minute sessions of in-person learning to carry out the lessons that can't be done at home. And so that's how a wood shop class or other hands-on laboratory classes would be able to utilize those seventy-minute in-person sessions. Question was submitted about graduation requirement of service learning. Kids have not had the opportunities to carry out service learning requirements as they, you know, once the pandemic hit. And so I will tell you that we did waive that requirement for the seniors last school year. And we have to consider modifying that again for the rest of the kids who are kind of coming through the system. And so while I can't give a definitive answer, yes, no answer to that question. That is on our high in our priority list about whether we have to make some exceptions and provide waivers for kids in that in that area. How will school handle student or staff member testing positive? Well, I touched a little bit earlier about how we would deal with the quarantine expectations and so forth. But the other guess aspect of this is in terms of communication. So we do feel that, you know, parents, students, staff members have a right to know of what's going on in terms of people in the building who are who who have contracted the virus. But at the same time, we have to be legally careful and protect the confidentiality rights of anybody. We cannot share information like that publicly about people. And so we're working to try and find a balance about people's privacy, but balanced with a need to know about what's going on and what risks are there are there are out there. We're certainly obligated to let people know if they had close contact, again, that within six feet for for fifteen minute or more period. But outside of that, we, you know, we have to be careful with with how we how we communicate. But we certainly, you know, expect to be open and transparent about that. And we'll certainly follow the Department of Public Health guidelines about how to communicate all those issues. There's a question about supply list. At at Oaklawn High School, we don't have a designated supply list issued out to students. Individual teachers will sometime make requests about materials they want for for students to be successful in their classes. And that would continue the same way. Teachers will, through their syllabus and introductory lessons, will talk about the kind of things that that students will need. All students will have their iPad, of course. We have a process in which our new students will be given their iPad. So they have it ready or roll at the start of the school year as well. There's a question about driver's ed. Driver's ed specifically was allowed to continue based on Department of Public Health guidelines, actually was allowed to continue this summer. So we had many of our kids get their behind-the-wheel instruction done. And we plan to continue that in the fall for those kids who are enrolled in driver's ed. There are a number of elevated safety and sanitation protocols for putting, you know, two students and a and a and a teacher into a car. Again, masks and open the windows and wiping everything down every single time. And kids need to be staying with the same group of kids and so forth. So driver's ed will continue for the blended learning students. This may be a class that for a full remote student has to be adjusted off their schedule and then, you know, maybe done at a future point in time. There was a question about coordination with our two primary elementary feeder districts, one twenty-two and one twenty-three. I believe both of those districts have released their plan publicly in the last few days or last week. I can tell you that Dr. Endley and and Mr. Matisse at one twenty-two and I talk very frequently. And we have consulted with the with each other to try and, you know, produce our plans in a way that provides as much convenience and flexibility for our families that have kids at both the elementary and the high school level. So that's one of the reasons why we have Monday as our full remote learning day. That's that's what District one twenty-three's plans calls for. And then they're also doing an alpha split very similar to us in terms of attendance on on Tuesdays, Thursdays, or Wednesday, Friday. So that hopefully will accommodate our families that have kids at both districts on 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 that side of town. And over on one twenty-two, they're using And over on one-twenty-two, uh they're using a slightly different model, but most of their kids are going to be in the building but released early. I I want to say it's like a one o'clock or one oh five dismissal um that most of their kids. And that works out because our kids will be released prior to that, so the other kids should be able to get home if they need to watch out and and take care of the the young kids as well. Um number ten, if a parent opts for full remote learning, what electives will be available? And that is a good question that I don't have right now a very good answer to because it's going to depend on the number of students, the year in school those students are, and what those specific needs are. We are going to do everything within our means to model in a re- in a full remote setting the same schedule kids have in their blended remote scheduling. But we know that that may not be possible with some classes, so it's going to be based on student need, staffing availability um uh as we kind of put together those schedules for those kids that are on the full remote plan, you know, right, right out of the gate. Um, okay, uh eleven is um wha- what do we do with the kid who comes to school, you know, seemed fine walking in the door, but during the day is become symptomatic, demonstrating some symptoms? Well, what are we doing there? We're 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 going to get those kids down to our nurse's office. And as I said earlier, our nurses are a- and that staff are ready to deal with this. They've gone through training, they've acquired specialized equipment. Like I said, we expanded that office area to allow for some isolation areas for kids to be able to held until um they were able to get them home. And so um the nurse's office, like I said, would be kind of the the uh kind of quarterbacking the communication with families and the Department of Public Health and so forth with situations like that. Okay, um number twelve was submitted. Um I'm guessing from a parent that knows a heck of a lot about um uh uh thermal thermometers um re- a- and so forth, and asked some very specific questions about our uh uh model. And um I can tell you this, um I I remember I asked Mr. McCurdy what the model was, and I don't I didn't write it down, and I don't remember what the model was, but it was a model that was suggested by our school nurse. And so we feel confident going in that these are high-quality um, you know, thermometers that are going to give us accurate information. I guess there was some issue in the news where certain thermometers were calibrated appropriately and maybe giving misreadings too high or too low or something like that. So um I don't have good, specific answers to these questions, but I can tell, you know, the parent that submitted and everybody else on the call that um it's prompting us to look a little further at uh calibrating and ensuring that, you know, we're we're using um high-quality equipment and and getting accurate information. And then the last question is um asking a little more about the spacing. Um is I had mentioned already that each of our classrooms is going to about, going to have about half the furniture removed. And by spreading out the remaining desks, um I mean, we literally have tape measures and out there to make sure that those desks are at least six feet apart from each other. You know, as is the the teacher, you know, in terms of being able to move around the class and maintain that social distance. So we're 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 very comfortable about that. The hallways are certainly going to be an issue to keep kids from their normal, you know, teenage practices of wanting to connect with their with their friends and and classmates and so forth. And we are, as the adults and supervisors in the building, are just going to need to monitor and 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 enforce those expectations. Kids are going to need to keep moving. They're going to have to go from class to class. As you saw from the schedule, there's only two passing periods. There's only two times other than walking in the or in the building and leaving the building, there are only two points in time in which kids are going to be out in the hallways. And so with only half the kids in the building, we're expecting the kids to be able to distribute themselves and 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 keep themselves apart. We even discussed the possibility of letting kids walk outside to get from one class to another. It's helps disperse the kids a little better. It also, again, as long as they're separated, gives them a chance to get a little bit of a breather and a mask break as well. So, you know, we're we're doing everything we can. Um the cafeteria, as I mentioned, will not be open for for food. That doesn't mean we wouldn't use the cafeteria on occasion uh for groups to 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 use for different uh purposes. But again, they would have to be uh at least six feet apart, and we're limited to only fifty people to be to be in there. Um we will have hand sanitizer available throughout the building, in every class, every day, uh in every office, in the hallways. Uh we will have sanitizing wipes or paper towels and spray. So as as a kid leaves his first period class and then goes to his second period class, as he walks in, he'll have um avail- you know, he'll he'll have the uh opportunity to take a wipe, wipe down his desk and kind of disinfect it before uh he or she sits down in that desk. And so that's how we expect to keep um, you know, the classroom level sanitized, literally on like an hour-by-hour basis. We're also going to have staff literally roving around the building, cleaning and disinfecting those high-touch areas in the bathroom and the stair rails, doorknobs and things like that um to try and reduce the uh the transmission, the opportunity for transmission. Okay, so that um we're we're just under an hour and got through all of these questions and answers. So I'm going to go back to uh uh Mr. Wargan and Dr. Leets and see if any other questions that we haven't already addressed came in that we can try and uh answer.
Yes.
Yes, I have a question. Hello?
Oh, you know what? I'm going to go through the questions that were submitted on the email first.
Okay, that's fine.
And then we'll open it up, okay? All right. All right, so um first question, Mike, you ready?
I'm ready, yep.
Just wondering what kind of mask is approved to use at the school?
Oh, you know, that that is a good question. The the guidance from the State Department of Public Health did not specify um, you know, wa- uh certain types of masks as being acceptable or unacceptable. As long as it is a mask, not a shield, shields are not allowed, but it has to be a mask that adequately covers the nose and the mouth completely. Um and beyond that, we're we're going to, you know, let kids be creative and self-expressive, and and we're not going to be very picky about with the type of mask that they that they uh uh wear. Um if they want to have messages and so forth, of course, as long as it's school-appropriate, um that would be, that would be fine as well. We are going to provide masks directly to students. Uh we purchased and have acquired these things over the summer, and the state of Illinois is also going to be providing us with a set of masks for every student and staff member.
Um and if the student forgets their mask, we will have masks available.
Yes, we will, yes.
Um will there be disciplinary action if a student ta- if a student has their mask down?
Well, yes. Um our, you know, I I I guess I'm 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 personally looking at it as we're probably going to follow like the three-strike rule here. Uh if a student is non-compliant with mask, um we will intervene and have a conversation and uh try and explain the importance and what the possible consequences would be. We'll involve parents in that conversation. But I will say, if 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 we have repeat offenders and kids just cannot comply, then they would be assigned to the full remote uh program, and they would have to continue their their education uh from home then.
Okay, if a fam- they know if a family chooses full remote at the start of the semester, they have to stay with it until January.
Right.
If they choose blended, do they have to stay with that until January?
Well, um, that is our plan. Um I I guess we didn't really open or consider the idea of a late decision because of something with the family, but I suppose we have to be open to that. Uh we certainly would like to minimize that as po- much as possible, but, you know, something happens and and some someone gets sick at home and some and and there's a situation, I think we have to be open to consider that. We're really hoping to get this sorted out in the next week and then, you know, be able to move forward with the semester. But we also understand we have to be flexible and nimble, and so um I I think we would deal with those on a case-by-case basis.
And that would go if they had a zero hour or needed additional instructional help as well?
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, that 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 wouldn't matter.
Okay, um is there a schedule yet for all remote students?
Uh, no, no, because, well, I mean, I guess I could look at that question two ways. Is there a schedule meaning courses that they're taking at a student-by-student basis? The answer is no, other than our commitment to try and uh build a schedule that is as much aligned as possible. Um but what the interaction with teachers looks like for a full remote student is not yet determined. It's hard to do that until we know the scope of that program, meaning the number of kids enrolled, the number of teachers that will be assigned to support those kids, and specifically what classes though it be. But the what I can say is that there is the expectation that those kids are going to get three hundred minutes of instruction every single day, and it would be some combination of in-person, live connecting with teachers as well as, you know, independent work.
All right, um does the freshman on-campus orientation apply to those who have also chosen remote learning only? Um I have an answer here that says they would be able to come for one of the day, well, one of the day is a seminar, and they'd be able to come to that. The other day is walking through your schedule, there wouldn't be a reason to come to that. So we're going to reach out to the freshmen who choose remote learning only, see if they're interested in ju- attending the uh the orientation day, the the where they go through their the attack orientation.
So the the quick answer, I think, to that question is yes, we would welcome those new students, freshman students, even if they're on the full remote learning, that they would be assigned to come in, probably not both of those days, but one of those days, when they, when we're doing the Canvas training, SEL, skill development and the i- issues and so forth. So we would be in touch with those families to let them know which which day to come in.
Okay, and then just a clarification, iPad pickup will be the week of August seventeenth, and we'll send out information of freshmen and new families.
Was that a question or just a clarification or information?
It was information.
Okay, very good.
Um and then, when are kids finding out about their schedule?
Uh, Dr. Leets, can you help me on that one?
So, well, I mean, so we-
Well, yeah, I mean, it depends. I I don't know, you know, who's asking if this is a blended parent or a remote parent. But um for blended, um you know, those, you have to go through and complete all of the steps of residency and registration through Skyward until we'll release student schedules. Um so that has to be done before that schedule's released. If a student um and a family is choosing e-learning, um still, you have to complete those processes. Um but it may be a little bit longer. Um we asked everybody to complete this survey uh by this weekend so that we can have um a couple of days with our staff to really kind of focus and figure out our e-learning um classes that are going to be available. So that will probably be a little bit later, like a week or so later than the kid, the students who have the blended schedule.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, I just, with all the communications we sent out earlier, uh we said everyone who was done was going to have their schedule by August third. Those schedules on August third are still in flux as we go through and balance after the survey. So-
Yes, good, good point, good point, Marcus.
Um there was a question about when they register and pick out the classes. Um so the actual class choosing was done back in February and January. Um so I'm not sure if this meant if they want to go full remote or if they want to change. I don't have clarification on that, but like you said, we would work with the families if things are going to change.
Correct. And unless there's the possibility of a parent is new to the district and hasn't come in and picked out classes yet, that would be done in in the coming weeks with our counselors.
If they haven't done that, they should make an appointment with Adrian Gannon tomorrow.
Yes, if they haven't already, correct, yes.
Um, will there be changing for PE or no locker rooms?
No locker rooms, no PE uniforms for PE this year.
Um is there parking available for students that can drive to school because of the short days?
Uh student parking will be available. And um, you know, I did see a late question get submitted about will the parking fee be reduced because they're only driving half the time? And uh I made note of that. We don't have an answer to that question yet, but it's a certainly a fair one.
Okay, if all students have to get temperature checked, what time will students have to arrive at school?
Yeah, uh a good question. Um we're we we are working to try and find a balance so that we don't have lines out the door, you know, with kids waiting to get to get scanned and entered. But we can't have kids congregating too early in the school year, in 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 the, you know, in the hallways in the school before school uh uh first period starts. So we're we're probably looking at like a fifteen, twenty-minute window in which we're going to be instructing kids that this is the time to arrive. Um and this is the door you're going to enter, and that's again, back to the parent survey. We're looking for your feedback so we know which door to assign students to to come through. So um the short answer to the question is, is, I'm going to ballpark this, like fifteen to twenty minutes before uh first period starts is the time we're going to ask the families to get the kids up to school.
Okay, what is the communication plan for a student who shows symptoms during the school day? And then for the kids who were near that student or a student who tests positive?
Okay, um for a student who is symptomatic, uh not necessarily tested or positive tested yet, but is symptomatic, that's where our nurse's office will intervene, and they'll do their assessment, and they'll be in touch with the family. And if there is a suggestion or recommendation to go get tested, we would certainly provide that information. And then we would expect the family to report back to us, you know, the outcome of of those results. If we are aware, when we are aware, if, you know, maybe not be an if or when, we are aware that a student has tested positive, we are obligated to inform, you know, we we would, we would have to do our own sort of little internal contact tracing in terms of their classrooms and where they were um and and who might have been sitting near those students and ensuring that they were at least six feet apart or not, talking to the teacher. If there was a scenario where a student was sitting within six feet with more than more than fifteen minutes, then we would be obligated to contact the family of that student um or that teacher if that were the case. And there would probably be a quarantine requirement for those individuals. But in terms of the greater public awareness of what's going on at Oklahoma High School, if we have cases arising, um what I said earlier was, we have to be careful to keep the public informed of risks and things that we're dealing with at school, at the same time, though, protecting the privacy of any individual that that contracts the virus. So um we will be open and 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 as transparent as we can and keep the community informed of what's going on. Uh but we have to be delicate about that to protect people's uh people's rights.
All right, what will be happening with band camp and band class?
Well, um band camp is very much related to whether we have marching band season, which is very much related to if we have an athletic season. So there are just some unknowns in that whole arena right now. Um but as of this moment in time, um, you know, uh band camp is moving forward. Um and unless something changed, Marcus, you can let me know if I'm not aware of something recent. Uh but band, band class is still operating.
Yeah, and band camp is still going on right now. They're planning on it. Um even for just the sheer fact of getting back into playing instruments, it's all going to be outdoors. It's been broken down into smaller groups. They're going to spread out on the football field, so they have spacing. Um and they're going to probably use this, be in the school as little as possible. They're probably going to be storing their instruments right along in a room, right along the track. So they're not actually going to be doing any playing inside the school. It'll all be outdoors.
Thanks, Marcus.
All right, um, parents work and some parents, including this parent, are unavailable to pick up kids after a few hours. How is the district working with that?
Well, um you know, the district is not generally um involved in transportation because of the proximity of our of our district and and the availability of uh public transportation. Uh we do not provide um school-sponsored uh transportation. And so I guess what I would suggest is um uh take a look at the Pace Bus Service uh that runs up and down Ninety-Fifth Street pretty regularly. There's another dedicated Pace Bus that uh kind of runs through down Southwest Highway over um into the hometown area of the district. Um and I suppose we could also probably assist in in helping with um carpool um opportunities as well. Uh so I I that's probably not the best answers in the world. I apologize, but um um, you know, we we would certainly help with communication um and reaching out any way we could.
Okay, um what happened to the stuff in the lockers from last year?
Uh, I am thinking that that's what all those brown bags are sitting um in the hallway by the main entrance, waiting for people to come and pick them up.
Yeah, so, I mean, I can answer this too. Some of them so the people who requested it and didn't pick them up are sitting in the hallway. All the rest are still in the lockers. Um we're going to ask kids on the first week of school We're going to ask kids on the first week of school to empty their school hallway lockers and their P E lockers will allow time for that to go in and get their stuff and get out. And then, then not use lockers unless they do the request for one.
Right.
What if a student has a reaction to touching the Clorox or other disinfecting wipes? Should the student be doing the cleaning?
I think I failed to mention in those kinds of supply kit, there's going to be gloves as well. And so if a student might have a reaction, they would be able to have gloves. And, and if they're not, that, you know, they can, kids can help each other out or the teacher could help out as well. So I think we can certainly be flexible with how the sanitation happens. I think the important thing is to make sure it actually happens, you know, for each kid walking into each class.
Okay.
Gloves will be available.
Someone asked if students, do students not have to buy school supplies if they're doing remote learning? Lauren did note that maybe the supplies are different, but like for a class like math, you might still need the graphene calculator.
Exactly. I mean, again, the typical supplies that a teacher would ask of a student might, I mean, in the math class, certainly a calculator, you know, maybe some, some spiral notebooks or some binders with loose leaf paper. I mean, it's, it's, it's usually not super specialized type of supplies unless it's like a, you know, a unique type of class. I mean, in art, there may be some specific needs and maybe some other industrial tech classes. But for the most part, it, it should be mostly kind of general, general supplies.
Question, will the fees be refunded for locks paid? This is a question for the district office. We did already, I think, remove the fees for locks. I think some people paid before we removed the fee. So I think the, the business office was going to handle those on a case by case basis.
Correct. I think, I think families would have two choices there. If, I forget what the amount is, six dollars or whatever it is, seven dollars. If a family wanted to return an unused brand new lock and get a refund, we would be open to that. My, my, my suggestion would be hold on to it. We don't expect to, you know, they'd be able to use it in the future. You know, when at some point in the not too distant future, hopefully we return to normal. But, but we would, we would accept a, a return for an unused lock.
Okay. What will happen to the kids who have hands-on classes and have a blended learning schedule? If we get put to a fully remote learning schedule? How will they finish that class to get credit for graduation? Will the class get dropped and will they be put in a completely different class or will it continue?
Excellent questions that unfortunately I don't have excellent answers. I mean, I can, I can answer it this way. When we went to full remote learning in the spring, we just kind of plugged through and found a way to, to, to provide instruction and assessment and get through the curriculum in a fully remote scenario. And that was for even those hands-on classes. They did the best they could. If we have to do that again, we'll again have to assess the feasibility of carrying out all of those classes in, in a legitimate way. So, so that, that, that will be our challenge if that becomes the reality. The other thing, and I touched on this earlier regarding graduation requirements. The state of Illinois provided a waiver to school districts and our own Board of Education supported a waiver of specific course requirements so that no student would be penalized because of situations resulting from the pandemic. And so we did that to take care of the graduating class of 2020. If the situation warrants for the next group of kids coming through, the this year seniors or even beyond that, that is certainly all on the table.
All right. If someone tests positive in the school, will there be a certified disinfecting company coming in to disinfect the school or will it be the staff cleaning?
It's our staff. Our staff have gone through the training. We've acquired the equipment we need. If there is, if there is a top positive test, there are very clear guidelines about the type of, you know, quote unquote, deep, deep cleaning that needs to occur in, in any classroom or office or area that that student was. So our staff are prepared, are trained and would carry that out.
What is the warning temperature for the screenings?
Oh boy. Have to go back to that guideline. At the top of my head, I don't recall that. I should know that. But that was, there was guidelines directly from the Department of Public Health about what's those, you know, answers to those questions and temperature reading were. And I apologize, I just can't remember what that is. Anybody?
Yeah, I just had two people chat it. It's 100.4.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And then this is who do we contact to make some type of payment arrangements for school fees and driver's ed?
Okay. Anything fee related or if there is a situation where a family is going to request a waiver of fees or a payment plan of fees, it's the, it's the school district office. Mr. McCurdy, our assistant superintendent coordinates that. But the individuals in our office would be able to help families with that process if there is a request for a fee waiver or, or payment. And that also includes participation in the free reduced lunch program. There are national and state guidelines that determine eligibility for those programs. And our staff is, is very ready to work with families that need that assistance.
All right. And the last question, I'm trying to figure out what it's, how many students will be in each pod? I don't know if that means like classroom or-
Oh, yeah. We, our plan does not designate students as science specific pods. I don't really know of any high schools who are doing that just by the nature of the high school schedule and the diversity of kids' schedules and needs and so forth. Pods are something I'm, I'm hearing and seeing very common at the elementary and even at the middle school, which basically the concept is when kids report to school, they are in a pod of, or, or small group of students and they never really interact with any students outside of that pod. And the idea is you're reducing exposure and intermingling of people and reducing the, the possibility of contracting the virus or spreading the virus. So for us, that isn't a feasible plan or option. So we don't have kids assigned to pods. Kids have to go from one class to the other. We instead decided to arrange the day so that they're only going to three classes on the days they're physically in the building.
Hello, I'm not sure if I'm cutting, but I have a quick question.
Sure.
Sorry. So will, will Oaklawn High School provide students with laptops?
We provide all of our students with iPads. And so the returning students have their iPad from last year. Our incoming freshmen and new students will be administered their iPads. What, when was that timeline, Marcus? Again?
My brother is freshman. He's going to freshman year.
Yes, he will be provided an iPad.
And we'll pass them out the week of the 17th. We'll send out information.
So he will use, he will use his iPad to, to study. Sorry?
Yes. Yes, you're correct, sir. He will, he will be able to use his iPad to connect with his teachers, to be able to video conference and, and participate in, in virtual remote lessons and access all of his resources and materials through the iPad. Yes, sir.
And sorry, one more question. I'm not sure. I think, I think you talked about it, but I, I think I misunderstood. Well, so is it up to the parents to decide if it's going to be full remote? Or it's going to be two days at the school? Or it's just going to be like a vote and most votes going to decide if students going to go to-
No. No, it's, it's the first, it's the first way you describe that, sir. Each family will decide for themselves and we will, we will honor the request of each family. And so if, if we have 25 or 30% of the families that want their children to stay at home the entire time, then that's the plan. We will, we will devise a schedule and a plan for those students. And the remainder of the students will come to school in the blended remote model. It's not all or one, one way or the other. We're planning for both plans.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate your answers.
You're welcome. Marcus, any other questions get submitted or Gina or, or other parents? I mean, I, I'm willing to stay on as long as people would like.
No, last question. What I mean-
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. My name is Caroline. This is my question. My question is that if the student decided to school, were they allowed to put on a glove to do whatever they want all day at school?
If they, you're asking if they wanted to wear gloves, would they be allowed to wear gloves in the school?
Yes, all day till the leave. Yes.
I, I, I'm not quite sure if I heard you completely, but I, I think your question was would students be allowed to wear gloves? And the answer would be yes. If students want to wear any additional safety or protective equipment beyond just the mask, we, where as long as it doesn't hinder their ability to participate in school, we're not going to have a problem with that.
Okay. And another question that I have is that, okay, how about if a student decided to out house about her, like two days at school? You know, like maybe they want to do e-learning after doing two days, like the schedule. So if they decided to out town, like, okay, they're going to do e-learning. So would they be able to do that?
Well, yeah, that, this was, this was asked earlier. And, and what I said was that I'm hoping people can decide early and then we would stick with that plan. But at the same time, if someone comes to school and there are problems or something happens at home, we would deal with those, of those requests on a case by case basis. We really need people to commit to the plan so that we can organize the school and operate the school in an efficient manner. If, if someone changes and wants to transition from blended to remote, we would have to talk with those families about what's happening in the rationale. Deal with the case by case.
Okay, Mike, will there be video meetings for the at-home kids and teachers?
Yes, yes, absolutely. And, and like I said, that's, that was one of the, the challenges with the remote learning experience from the spring. Aside from not getting graded, basically, there wasn't that systematic, continuous, regular face-to-face interactions through a virtual learning session. And that absolutely will be part of the full at-home remote learning plan.
And then how many other students would be in a class with each child?
Yeah, we, we plan on limiting the number of kids in any specific class to 15 or less. We have a lot of different size classrooms and so forth, but for the most part, if, if, you know, we can spread the desks out, 15 desks in a classroom spread out, we can still maintain that six foot radius in almost all of our classes. So 15 was hopefully a ceiling and maybe even a little less than that in most situations.
Yeah. The only, if I can jump in real quick here, the only exception would be P E. P E, like you said, has large spaces, right? Like gyms and fitness centers. So they may, they may go up to 20, but they're not in classrooms. They're in actual gym spaces. So those may be a little bit larger.
Good point. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
My question is about the mask. I understand that CDC stop a guideline about the mask with, you know, like a hole, like a breathing hole and something like that. Is this still allowed at Oaklawn High School or not?
I have not seen that. And so at this point, I would say, no, that would not be allowed. But your question is prompting me to go back and take a look at the CDC guidelines. They came out last week.
It was just recently came out. So that's why I'm just really wondering if that's allowed or it could be cloth mask or it had to be medical mask, you know, something like that. Just wondering what is approved for the school.
Sure. Yeah, certainly cloth masks are fine. The disposable kind of like paper cloth masks are okay. Using the kind of, the kind of mask that kind of go around your neck and come up over your nose and mouth, those are acceptable. But you would, you would said something about like a ventilation or something like that. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what that means. So-
You know, like the N34, N35?
Oh.
Something like that, but-
I, I understand. Yes. Yes, I understand. Yes, those are acceptable. I mean, those are even higher grade. You know, those are, those are what the nurses and doctors are using, but those are acceptable. Yes.
I just want to make sure because CDC said that it is not allowed.
Okay. Like I said, I, and I know that guidance came out at the end of last week. What's, what, what is going to matter for us, you know, as a public school in Illinois is what does the Department of Public Health say? And what often happens is the CDC recommendations end up trickling down to the state guidelines. And so we need to follow the state guidelines. And so, but like I said, your question is going to prompt us to kind of go back and review that a little more carefully, I'd say.
Are we going to be informed about it? What is allowed or not allowed before, like a couple of days beforehand?
We will, we will, we will communicate everything. Yes.
Thank you.
Between, between now and the start of the school year, you're going to be getting a lot of masks, probably more than you care to get from Oaklawn High School.
I don't mind getting all the information.
All right. Very good.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Yes.
Okay. What happens if a mask is destroyed or lost during the school day? Are there going to be replacements available?
I, I'm really sorry because someone else is not muted. You're, you're getting an echo. I couldn't really understand your question.
If masks are destroyed or lost during the day, are they going to be replacements available?
Oh, yes. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we will have, I mean, like I said, we've been building up our stockpile of masks. And so we will have masks in the classrooms available in our offices. If, if a student walks up and forgets a mask, you know, we're, especially early on, you know, we're going to be very understanding and have a supply of masks for kids to use.
Okay. And that I was also wondering, obviously you've probably looked into how you're going to handle like emergency leaves, like fire drills or other type of emergencies like that.
Yeah, that's a good question that was a topic of conversation yesterday that I was on a conference call with the State Board of Education officials. And that very question was asked with the, you know, I think we all understand it. You know, you start hurting a group of kids out of the building for a fire drill. It's going to be hard to maintain social distancing.
Yeah.
So, so at this point, the state is not provided any sort of exception or waiver to the emergency drill requirements that we're all supposed to maintain. And so until that changes, we have to plan to do those and just social distance as best we can. Hopefully we can get them all done in less than 15 minutes so that there is, if, if there is crossing of that six foot boundary that they're for a very short period of time. The other thing I suppose, at least for the fire drill that is helpful is they're outside. And so when you're outside, that's definitely a safer environment than indoors.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt again, but I have a question. Back in February before the pandemic hits, my parents and brother chose the schedule, the classes. And after, so is there going to be, are they going to have to choose the classes again? Or how's it going to work out?
Sure. I can address this and Dr. Leece chime in if there's anything to add. For the students that, that stay with the default plan of blended learning, those students will basically follow the same schedule that was picked and, and, and sorted out back in February. So we are not anticipating schedule changes for those kids at all. In fact, we probably, in a normal year, we sometimes open the door for kids that they change their mind about classes and maybe drop something and pick something up. We are not going to be in that situation this year where we could honor those kind of schedule changes. There may be some scenarios where students wish to reduce their schedule because they don't need it for graduation. Um, we would be open to those kind of situations, but again, that would be case by case. The only kids that are really going to have to deal with possible schedule changes are the kids that choose, uh, parents that choose the full remote option.
And Mike, at the end of first semester, for people who either choose remote or choose blended, what is the plan for second semester? Do they have to stick with it or can they change at that time? Can we address it or address it later in the semester?
Our, our plan at this moment is that a, a commitment to blended or full is a one semester commitment. Meaning that families would have the option, as we start to prepare a transition then to second semester, to either maintain what they're doing or if they wanted to move to the other plan, there'll be an opportunity for, for parents to let us know that. And we would honor those requests.
Hi, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, in reviewing the blended plan, um, I just wanted some more detail and I apologize if you cover this. Um, regarding this, the students' total, um, teacher hands-on experience.
Yes.
I, I see it mentions the seventy-five minutes total, um, uh, three seventy-five minute classes periods on campus. So when the kids are at home for the two hundred and twenty-five minutes at home independent work, will they have access to the teachers, meaning a, um, a class or on-hand environment as well? I know that that was lacking in the, the remote learning session, um, in the, the spring semester.
Sure. Well, when, when kids are on their assigned day at home, they are going to be, you know, they, they will have seen that teacher either the day before or they're going to see him the day after. And so, um, and, and, and they're going to see, all the kids are going to see all their teachers remotely on Monday. So the expected flow is that on Monday, as the teacher is meeting remotely with all of their students, they're going to lay out the week plan. And so for those morning class kids, they're going to know what's expected of them to be done at home, whether that's on Tuesday or Wednesday and what they're going to be doing in class on Tuesday or Wednesday. And so when the kids are working at home, the teachers are going to be teaching the other half of the kids. So they may not be immediately available. Now, there are some teachers that are talking about maybe virtually connecting the kids at home to the lot in live stream, what's going on in the class, but that's not going to be a mandate or an expectation of our kids that they have to sit through, you know, at home, seventy-five minutes of instruction with the kids, uh, that are going to be in class. Um, but the kids will have access electronically to their teachers. And the way we wanted to develop our plan was so that those kids who are working remotely, independently for two hundred and twenty-five minutes in the afternoon is when they will have that virtual connection, live connection to their teachers. And so we wanted to set up a scenario where kids are connecting to their teachers either in person at school or online virtually every single day. They're going to connect with half of their teachers. So, um, hopefully that answered your question somewhat. Um.
It did. Um, I just have a concern, um, and, and this is from personal experience with my son. Even though we, we, and again, this is learning off of the spring semester. I understand how this is much of an improvement, but the at-home learning, my son was still missing that, that instruction, that one-on-one instruction from a teacher that he would receive.
Yeah.
Normally, uh, daily being in a class with a teacher. So he ended up being behind in his coursework and I had to coax him. So i- 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 he suffered a lot. And so.
Yeah.
If, if there was one-on-one time for the students personally to have that interaction, I think it would be better in that blended, that blended classroom time.
Sure. Well, let me, let me say this. First of all, I, I, I do feel for your son and I know your son is not alone in the challenges of having to be self-motivated and self-directed and self, um, you know, kind of, uh, regulating in terms of, um, completing work and, and connecting with, with staff, but it, it, it definitely were a far cry from where we were back on March thirteenth, when we kind of entered this new world. Um, the other thing I'll mention is that the ISB guidance is strongly suggesting schools consider the possibility of providing more in-person time for targeted students that are struggling. Uh, these may be kids that, um, have an IP, but not necessarily just kids with IPs or have language learning issues. And so we are thinking, once we kind of get this off the ground, of opening up the possibility of additional students in time where kids who come to cap- campus for more supports if there's identified needs. But we need to take this one step at a time. That's not something we're ready to launch right during the first few weeks of school.
I have a question. I have a question that kind of plays off of her question.
Yes.
If, is it possible to consider going back to when Oklahoma High School used to give out planners to every student so that when you're laying out that guideline on Monday, at home, the students can be writing all that down right in their planner so they don't have an excuse to say, oh, I missed that or oh, I forgot that I was supposed to do this on that day because it's going to be a lot for them to keep up initially, especially with everything being, uh, you know, so different for them.
Well, uh, let me, Mike, if you don't mind, I'll answer this question. Um, I think, um, you know, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know how old your student is, but, um, if they're a returning student, yeah, we're moving, I mentioned a little bit earlier how we're moving to Canvas as our learning management system. That is a far superior product than an actual handwritten planner because Canvas actually has the students, um, all their courses there with a calendar built in. So when a teacher adds an assignment into their course, it automatically shows up on the kid's calendar. There's also like in part of their, uh, like a to-do list for kids so they know they have upcoming events. So, um, you know, Canvas, once kids get into it and start using it, um, with their teachers for their courses, will do all those things that you're doing automatically and technologically for them.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Will parents have the same access? I know you mentioned Canvas earlier, parents have access. Will they have the same access to Canvas as the students do?
Yes, they will. Yep. And we're working on getting, um, instructions for how you guys, uh, how parents can get their logins.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Um, I know that you guys talked this in the very beginning and I missed the, the beginning, um, for zero hour. Um, do the kids have to leave school or do they have to come home and then come back to school?
Well, we're, we're going to be very flexible with those zero hour kids. Um, if, if they choose to leave and come back, we're, we're not going to stop that. If they want to run to McDonald's and get breakfast and come back, that's okay. But for those that don't want to do that or can't do that and they want to stay in the building, we do have to have a structured, um, kind of assigned area for them. Uh, and that will be kind of using our large areas. That will be the cafeteria and possibly the gyms and possibly the media center. So kids will have a safe place to go, um, you know, to get some work done and so forth. But again, it's going to have to be safe. It's going to have to be social distance and we can't have more than fifty people in any one space.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I don't know if I feel comfortable him leaving and going and I'm like, I just, if you're going to do zero hour, you stay at school. So I know you're there. So I go to work.
Yeah, yeah. I know that we have had some families under the circumstances, um, withdraw out of the zero hour program. So I'm not, I'm not encouraging that, but I'm just mentioning that, that, um, you know, we're, we're going to be flexible with, with, uh, situations where maybe people are asking to reduce the schedule.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll play it by ear and see how it goes. And if it becomes a problem, maybe you could just take them out then for this year.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, I have a question. My question, I have a question. My question is, what if I have to send my, uh, daughters to school with some, um, wives, wipes everything down? Would that be okay?
I'm sorry. I didn't quite understand the question. If your daughter needs to come to school with.
With some wives, like the big wives that she has to wipe the decks down?
Oh.
Wherever she at, i- i- would that be okay?
That's certain, yes, yes. She can certainly bring any sort of disinfecting, you know, uh, hand wipes uh, or, or hand sanitizer. We're allowing people to bring their own. But what I'm also saying is that we are going to provide that. Every single classroom is going to have disinfecting, you know, hand sanitizer and wipes or, or disinfectant sprays and paper towels to kind of wipe off the desk surfaces, uh, for students. So it's no problem for your daughter to bring those, but we also will provide them.
Oh, okay. And then another question is that, if, because I have like a, like a gargoyle, is this like a sunglasses? Can she come to school with that? It's not a sunglasses, but just to protect our eyes.
Yeah, we. That would be fine. That would be fine. Um, uh, we don't see that as being anything that's distracting or getting in the way of her learning. Um, and so if, if students do want to wear additional protective equipment, um, beyond just the mask, um, we, we're certainly not going to object to that.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Just, uh, questions for, uh, freshmen's. I know the, they have to attend the twenty and twenty-first of August, but if we choose the full remote, uh, uh, learning, do they still have to attend these two days?
Well, we, we would like them to attend just one of those days because one, on one of those orientation days, there's going to be training provided on, on the technology and, uh, assisting students with understanding expectations and how to be successful in a remote learning scenario. So we will request that the, that the students who are full remote come on one of those two days and we will communicate with families about which day we would ask them to come.
Okay. Uh, and their, their tablets, when will they receive them to start the whole process?
Can you say it again, sir? When will they receive what?
The, the iPad, the tablets.
Oh, uh, Marcus, what was that? The week of August seventeenth, I think we said, right?
Yes, the week of August seventeenth. So we'll send out information. Um, it'll be available that week. Uh, we did have a question of will band be available with full remote?
What was the question, Marcus? Will band operate full remote?
Yeah, will band be available for kids who choose full remote?
That has not yet been decided. Um, it's a good question that, uh, unfortunately at this point, we don't have a good answer. We, we need to kind of see what the, what the, uh, uh, group of kids that are going for remote looks like and the, you know, the band and teachers about how we can maybe make that work if we can make it work.
Uh, I have an attendance related question. I, I know at the grade school level, uh, for both like one twenty-two and one twenty-three, they're doing something in regards to like if the, the child has like even a fever of over a hundred point four that they stay home for three days. Um, and then there's something different for like if they've been exposed, obviously they stay home for two weeks. Uh, how will things like that, like, are you guys doing the same thing? Sorry if I missed it, if you weren't addressed it. And if they do, if you would have to, like, how does that affect their attendance?
Yes, um, those, we will be following the same guidelines because we're all following the same guidelines issued by the Department of Public Health. And so if there is a student, uh, who is symptomatic, uh, but, um, uh, does not test positive or does not get tested at all, but the symptoms diminish and there is a period of time where the fever is gone without taking aspirin and so forth. I forget the exact, uh, timeline. I want to say something like seventy-two hours. Then, then the student would be allowed to safely return to school. So we will follow those same guidelines. And again, that would be our stu-, our school nurse's office would be coordinated, uh, coordinating and communicating with families about those issues.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Uh, if a student during zero hour leaves the school premises, whether to go to McDonald's or go back home, upon returning to school, will they then again have their temperature taken and be asked the questions?
Yes, good question. The answer is yes to that. If, if, if a zero hour student does leave and come back, they would have to go through that same screening process. Yes.
So at any time, if the student leaves a physical plant of the school and then comes back in, after, even after five minutes, whether he goes to the car, to his car, their car or not, they will then have to be screened again?
Well, I, I would say yes to that, but I'll also say that other than that, um, time period between zero hour and first period, students do not leave the building or campus. They, they may go outside for PE class or something, but students are not allowed to go to their car without permission. So if there was permission granted and the student might be even escorted out or something like that, then that may not warrant the need for a, for a scan. But if they leave and they are no longer under the, the supervision of the school, like I said, those zero hour kids that maybe would be doing, then they would have to get screened.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, should we be concerned with latex gloves as some students may have latex injuries?
Yeah, that's a very good question and, um, I, uh, might defer to Mr. McCurdy if you're on the call. Uh, are, are the, are the gloves that we've acquired latex or are they latex free? Do you happen to know?
Uh, he had to step away. We'll have to look into that.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a note of that. That's a good question. I, I'm sorry, I don't have an immediate answer.
All right, thank you.
And just, just to bring, just to piggyback on that one, if students are allowed to wear gloves from home, they should be advised to make sure that those gloves are not latex gloves.
Yeah, they're, very good point. Thank you.
A question, uh, how many hours the, how many hours will the full, uh, remote, uh, learning students will learn each day? For example, on Monday, how many hours will they study from whom?
Yeah, the, the, the guidelines from the State Board of Education is a minimum of three hundred minutes of learning activity each day. And that, that is for whether the students are on the blended model or the full remote model. And so there is, there is going to be a, 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 a best good faith effort to provide kids with approximately three hundred minutes of instruction and learning support activities every single day. The unknown that I can't be specific right now is for those full remote learning kids, there is absolutely going to be live interaction with teachers, um, on a very regular basis. But we do not have the specifics yet built of how frequently that would happen and exactly when during the day that would happen. That's, that's a work in progress for us.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have a question.
Yes.
And I apologize if this was covered before. Um, PE for the, the students that will be, um, doing the blended remote learning. Um, are they required, are all students required to wear a face mask during PE? Or is there enough space that this PE can be done safely without face mask?
If the PE class has to operate indoors, face mask must stay on. That is a non-negotiable directive from the Department of Public Health. If the weather is decent, we are encouraging our PE teachers to bring the kids outside anytime they can because the guidelines change a little bit when the kids are outside. So if they go outside, provided they keep that sa- that safe six-foot distance, that is an opportunity to kid, for kids to have some relief and be able to take their masks off.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, Mike, this might be a good thing to just remind people that, uh, we can end here, but fall2020@ulcs.org is where you can email questions at any point.
Yep.
Um, so I think, you know, there's no more coming in on the chat or the email. We could just remind people, fall2020@ulcs.org.
Yep, that, i- 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 it. We know that there will be questions that come up and the fall2020@olchs.org is a designated email that goes to a number of us that we will get immediate or as soon as possible responses, um, uh, to anything that comes in. So, um, feel free to submit any comments, questions or concerns in that way. And again, I would ask everybody, please, please complete that survey and talk to your friends and your, the kids' parents, other kids' parents, and make sure we get that survey in. Um, and we will send that out, uh, that link out again if you have it fresh in your, in your inbox. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Um, hopefully this was a worthwhile, well, almost on two hours. Thank you, everybody, for your time. Um, hopefully this was a worthwhile, well, almost on two hours now, uh, worthwhile time and informative and uh, uh, we're there for you. We appreciate your support and um we'll get through this together. Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Thank you.